Call this meeting to order for the June 3 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission this evening. We've got several things to go through. Roll call first, if we would, please.
Connie Yoshimura. Stacy Dean.
Here.
Terry Parks.
Here.
Dana Prus.
Here.
Peter McAhee.
Yes ma'am.
James Ferguson.
Here.
Tyler Robinson.
John Spring.
Here.
Okay, and did we have minutes to present? I didn't see any in.
No.
Okay, no minutes, okay. And we need, Ms. Dean, would you do disclosures for us, please?
Commissioner Spring, do you have any disclosures?
Uh, no, I do not, thank you.
Commissioner Prus, do you have any?
I do not.
Commissioner Parks? Do you have any disclosures?
Okay, I'm sorry, I was playing somewhere else. For the record, I was not here for the May 13 meeting and will be abstaining from voting on Resolution 2013-01 and 2013-022, 2013-023, and 2013-024.
Commissioner Ferguson, do you have any disclosures?
No ma'am.
And Commissioner Peter, do you have any disclosures?
Nothing ma'am.
Thank you. And I have none.
Thank you. We have items on the consent agenda and item numbers DA through DG. Is there, I would take a positive motion to approve those?
I'd pull a couple of those.
Okay, fine.
I'd like to pull Items D1A, the Wetlands Management Plan, and I'd like to pull Item D1D, the Design Study Report.
D1A and D1D. With those items pulled, I would take a motion to approve the rest of the consent agendas, a positive motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve them, approve the remainder.
And we have a second by Commissioner Spring. Do we have any issues with that at all? Any objections? Then we'll say that those are approved and let's go back in and talk about, eh, Mr. Ferguson?
Okay, on Resolution 2013-017, the Anchorage Wetlands Plan, I've got two different resolutions in front of me. And I cannot tell on the front page which one we should be talking about. In the future, it would really be helpful to the commission if we could have a revision date on them because we receive a lot of paper up here and we don't know which one we're talking about. From conversation earlier with the staff, I believe that the one we're talking about is the one with the table in it and has the page numbers, pages 1 of 12, 2 of 12 on it. Is that correct, staff?
Through the Chair, Thea Tobisch with the Planning Department. The correct version is the version that should have been couriered to you Friday afternoon and I think it has about eight or nine pages and the last page has a colored map on it.
That's not helpful, both of them have a colored map on the last page, sir.
I have 1 through 12 with the last page being a...
The item, the correct item has six pages. It has the resolution, it has a table, and a map.
Okay, six pages we can handle. Okay.
Okay, never mind.
Okay, so we got the six-page one is the one that should be in it, correct?
Wait, 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 wait. I don't, that's, that's his graph.
What staff just said, the second to last page should be labeled Page 8 on the bottom.
I got 8 of 12, is that right?
No, that's the other one you want to look at.
I don't have it.
It was couriered on Friday, I was told. I believe that's correct.
I think we at least ought to identify and make sure that all the commissioners have that particular one in front of us. I have one that has draft on it.
They've all say draft. They've all say draft. The only way I can tell the difference is on the last, next to the last page is Page 8 on the bottom.
No, then I don't have that, I'm sorry.
Me neither. Do they have more copies?
The one that's loose, that's not stapled to the resolutions, is the right one, staff.
So is this the right one?
Yeah.
That was not stapled anything.
Yeah, but you can't tell.
Well, this one, well.
Well, let's make sure that everybody has one, at least so that they know what they're voting on.
The loose one with the table, landscape, is the other one?
No, my, this, see?
It should have been loose.
Okay, are we, Mr. Chairman, are we organized now?
Not yet. I mean, I still don't have a copy of what I, is it?
I actually, I don't have any questions on it, I just wanted to clarify which one we were working with.
Yeah, that's just the one. I see the one, it's the table with the 8 on it. I did not have a copy of that.
Okay.
So we'll use this. Everybody's aware now which one it is?
There's been one that just came by.
That's correct. It, you should have the colored map and the next page inside is 8 in the middle on the bottom. So is that all you had on that, Mr. Ferguson?
No, it was not. I got one more question for staff.
Got it.
The packet that gets passed on to the Assembly, in this case, is a redlined copy as opposed to a clean copy. And I'm asking why we're not sending the Assembly a clean copy?
Through the Chair, we haven't sent the Assembly anything at this point.
Okay, well, I assumed that this is a copy of what would be going to the Assembly. Is that not correct?
Actually, we haven't decided the best way to do that. Typically, we send the original. In this case, you requested the revision, so probably, I'm talking, thinking out loud here, we will probably clean this up and send this as is, clean.
Okay, I would prefer a clean copy to go to the Assembly. And so, I just, I thought what we had asked to see was a copy of what was going to go to the Assembly was, my understanding is what we were going to get back. And as long as, as long as the Assembly's getting a clean copy and I know which resolution, I'm happy on that one.
You want to vote on each one of these individuals? Probably ought to.
You have two items to pick.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, they need separate.
Okay. If, any other discussion on this item? If not, I would take a positive motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Have a second. Mr. McAhee, do you have any objections? None, then that item will go forward. Now, Item DD 2013-021, you pulled that item also, Mr. Ferguson?
I did. We had asked to see this to come back to us at 65 percent so that we could come to an understanding that there was going to be a maintenance plan on the landscaping, that we were interested in some cost savings, and we wanted to make sure some resolution was with the Non-Motorized Transportation Coordinator, and if Attorney B was being put forward, it would be considered a separate sidewalk. None of those changes, none of those requests show in what we were given back. And we have a duty up here, we're attempting to perform, and we made comments and it was passed in the resolution, just sending it back to us is disappointing to this commissioner at least.
Staff, have any comments on that?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Ferguson. So the next step is, the plans that have been provided as information to the commission will go to the UDC in July, and one of the parts of the staff analysis will be to address whether or not the design sheets that are going to the commission for approval have, how they've addressed the Planning and Zoning Commission's conditions of approval. And so, staff will point out where they've complied and where they, where they haven't. And then the Urban Design Commission will decide what to approve, what to approve.
I agree, but the drawings we got back today were the exact drawings we saw two weeks ago.
Yeah, the, the design team has, has, in narrative form, described why they, they didn't include the bike path and why they didn't separate the sidewalk.
How, how did they show us that?
Um, if you turn to, so this is the, for the benefit of everybody, this is the information item, it's a part of the packet that was routed to you, couriered to you. If you look at, well, there's not page numbers on this, but several pages in under 7, it says, response to commitment, response to comments and conditions of approval from the Design Study Report Review, and that's what the commission did, was the Design Study Report Review. And they say Condition 1, Condition 2, so they write out the conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission placed on this project. And then they write a response stating, you know, whether or not they're going to comply with it or not and why. And, you know, this is what, this is, you know, this is the submittal to UDC.
Okay, I missed those when looking on the drawings. Thank you.
Yeah.
No questions?
Any, any other comments? Yes, sir.
Yes, through the Chair, staff, I think I, I think there's a correction that needs to be made on the resolution under Part A2 where you state that A Street is a urban collector, it will be upgraded urban collector, I believe that, it's 48th Avenue that's going to be upgraded urban collector, and that A Street is a local street. So I would make a motion, if there's, after the motion I'll make an amendment, then to correct.
Let's do the motion first and then you can ask for amendment, thank you. We have a positive motion to accept this? Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Okay, and seconded by Mr. Prus. And we have an amendment to that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I amend the resolution to change A Street to a local street and 48th Avenue to an urban collector standard.
Do you have a motion to do that? And then we'll, I say, and a second? Is that an, an emotion? If you push a button with a motion and then get a second on it? And do you have any objections to that? Should not be, okay. Now let's get back to our, there are none, so we'll pass that on. And then let's talk about the original motion to approve. There we go. And there's no objections to that from those who can vote, I don't believe, so that will go forward. All right, the next item on the agenda will be, we got the consent agenda done, now we'll move on to, there are no introductions, the introductions for the, for the public testimony, we have two cases that will hear tonight. And the procedures for which this public may speak to the commission at this meeting is that after the staff presentation is complete on the public hearing items, the Chair will ask for public testimony in each issue. Persons wishing to testify are limited by the commission's rules of procedures. Petitioners, including his or hers representatives, will have 10 minutes in total. They may reserve a portion of their time for rebuttal. Representative groups, community councils, PTAs have five minutes, and we would ask that you tell us what your position is with that group and what the group is prior to starting your testimony. Individuals are limited to three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked to ask, have questions asked by the commissioners. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commissioners. An individual may have the appeal rights to any action by the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from the commission decision within seven days. We would also ask anyone who comes to the mic if they would state their first and last name and spell their last name for the record, please, that's very helpful. And our first hearing will be, public hearing will be on Case Number S 11864-6, Potter Creek Development LLC. Staff, we'll ask for your comments first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, before I get into my staff presentation, I'd like to just mention to the commission that I have Stephanie Moore-Millo, the Municipal Traffic Engineer, and Steve Schrader, the Municipal Engineer, here available for, for questions. This is a request for subdivision variance from AMC 2185-110, street lighting, which states, "Street lighting shall conform to the requirements of the Department of Public Works and the electric utilities serving the subdivision." I'd like to give you just a brief background on this particular case. On July 23, 2012, the Public Works Department granted a variance to increase the maximum road grade of Potter Valley Road from approximate station 26 plus 5-0 to the max, to 36 plus 5-0 to 10 and 1/2 percent, a 30 percent increase over the, over the Design Criteria Manual, the DCM, standard of 8 percent. This is an increase from the previously approved 10 percent variance along the same stretch of roadway granted on October 23 of 2008. On October, or, I'm sorry, on August 13, 2012, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved an amendment to the previously approved preliminary plat with a variance from AMC 218240, design standard for cul-de-sac length, for a cul-de-sac exceeding the maximum 900 feet in a rural residential district. On October 16, 2012, the Public Works Department granted a variance to increase the maximum side slope along Potter Valley Road from 2 to 1 to 1.5 to 1. The result is a steeper drop-off on the downslope side of the, of the road. Guardrails are required along the downslope side of the road to help prevent cars running off the road and down the slope. On February 4, 2013, the Planning and Zoning Commission granted a first 18-month time extension and modification of the plat to allow individual driveways for 11 lots running Potter Valley Road. The original submittal of this subdivision basically proposed five lights, two at two intersections and one at another. On May 17, the Public Works Department met with EPS and Triad Engineering to discuss alternatives to lighting at intersections to collector standards. On May 30, this is last Thursday, a formal variance request was submitted by the, by the petitioner to private development and public works. With that being said, I'll go ahead and go into the four standards for granting of a variance. The first standard, this standard does not appear to be met. While the steepness of the property can rightly be considered a special condition, variances and approval conditions have been granted appropriately to address this condition. It is the application of the provisions of the subdivision regulations regarding lighting that will create a practical, reasonable, and desirable development for the general public by mitigating other exceptions that have been granted to this subdivision. The road standards for the Hillside District Plan vary based upon the context and classification of the roadway. There are three defined area, area appropriate standards to be applied, the urban, central hillside, and southeastern. The Hillside District Plan identifies Potter Valley Road as an urban roadway within the Anchorage Road Roads and Drainage Service Area, or ARDA. The Official Streets and Highways Plan classifies Potter Valley Road as a collector 1 road. Collectors generally experience 2,000 vehicles per day or greater. A build-out analysis by the Long Range Planning Section estimates that approximately 300 homes could be built to the west and southwest of Potter Highland Subdivision, all of which would access the Seward Highway using Potter Valley Road. Using AMC 2185-050A2 to estimate average daily trips at full build-out, an additional 2,400 trips would, would use this portion of Potter Valley Road daily, in addition to the trips generated by homes constructed within the Potter Highland Subdivision. The goal and primary objective of the Hillside District Plan is to improve the system of roads and respond to current use and expected growth. It is traffic's intent to enhance traffic and pedestrian safety on Potter Valley Road by maintaining uniformity and appearance, meaning the minimum levels of luminance allowed for this road type within the character of the Hillside District Plan and required by the Design Criteria Manual. Standard number two, this standard does not appear to be met. It is the assignment of the Traffic Engineering Division to protect life and property and to ensure the safety and welfare of the citizens of the, of Anchorage through sound engineering judgment and practices. The MOA will be assuming ownership and liability in the event of safety problems related to this variance. Three safety variances have already been granted for this portion of Potter Valley Road. Additionally, the Planning and Zoning Commission removed the requirement for a common access drive to, to multiple lots in the steepest portions of this subdivision. The result of that action is multiple breaks in the guardrail for, for multiple driveways. Having multiple guardrail ends creates a much more significant crash hazard than a continuous guardrail. The steep road grades, multiple guardrail openings, and potential for glatiation create public safety concerns. It is the, it is the position of staff that the granting of this variance could be detrimental to the public and possibly injurious to other property in the area. The petitioner cites the lower portion of Potter Valley Road as not having continuous lighting in their request. The lower portion of Potter Valley Road is different for significant reasons. The maximum road grade is 8 percent, which conforms with the current DCM. There are no driveways onto the lower portion of Potter Valley Road, and there is limited amount of guardrail on that portion of roadway. If the Planning and Zoning Commission grants this variance, there will be no standards for lighting along this section of road. The commission does not have the expertise to replace the, the established industry-accepted lighting standards with new standards that can assure the public health, safety, and Standard number three, this standard may be partially met. The Hillside District Plan classifies this area as urban, that is, as it is inside ARDA, and thus, urban standards of Title 21 and the DCM apply. The variance for road grade is already a deviation from the HDP, or Hillside District Plan. The urban lighting standard is consistent with the road standards of the Hillside District Plan. A different portion of the Hillside District Plan under Policy 140 calls for the establishment of standards for lighting. Page 641, uh, 6-41 of the Hillside District Plan states, "The specific standards include all residential light, lighting must be downward directed, avoiding creating glare on surrounding properties, and street lighting, particularly at intersections, will be necessary for safety reasons." Lighting standards for the Hillside District Plan area have not yet been established. The same section provides the intent language for lighting, discussing the desire for low ambient light levels and preservation of, quote, "dark sky" character of the plan area. Ultimately, without new lighting standards, it is difficult to measure what will achieve the Hillside District, Hillside District Plan's call for low ambient light and dark skies. But the Hillside District Plan clearly calls out for street lighting for safety. The Department of Public Works relied upon the Hillside District Plan, Design Criteria Manual, and the Official Streets and Highways Plan in making the determination that continuous lighting isn't appropriate and safe standard for Potter Valley Road. Bearing from this determination would have the effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations. Standard number four, this standard does not appear to be met. It is not appropriate to reduce the petitioner's development costs at the expense of safety-related and code-required street lighting. The municipality and its boards and commissions have a greater responsibility to the public for a safe roadway than to reducing construction costs for the developer. The petitioner argues that the lighting standard required by the traffic engineer violates the tenants of the Hillside District Plan and the vision of the amended Title 21, not yet implemented. While the Hillside District Plan does promote land, low ambient light levels and the dark sky character of the hillside, it is not a regulatory document intended to enforce regulation. It is, however, a document intended to promote the vision of the hillside community and act as a guide to Title 21. The current Title 21 requires street lighting to conform to the requirements of the Department of Public Works and the electric utilities serving the subdivision. The traffic engineer has determined that continuous lighting is the appropriate and safe level of lighting for this roadway. Because the four standards do not appear to be met, and because a, a variance from the DCM has already been submitted by the petitioner to the Department of Public Works, staff recommends denial of this variance request at this time. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for the staff? Commissioner Ferguson?
I have a couple of questions. The DCM manual, or the DCM, has that been submitted to the Planning and Zoning for review and approval?
Through the Chair, Mr. Ferguson, my name is Steve Schrader with Project Management Engineering. It has not.
Okay. Has the Hillside District Plan been submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission for approve, review and approval?
Through the Chair, Mr. Ferguson, yes, it has.
Okay, has it been submitted to the Assembly for review and approval?
Yes, Mr. Ferguson, it is adopted policy of the municipality.
Okay, so the, the document that has not been adopted by the municipality is the Design Criteria Manual, is that correct?
That would be correct, Mr. Ferguson. Through the Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Spring? Yes, through the Chair, staff, do you remember, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but do you remember when the Hillside District Plan was adopted?
Through the Chair, Mr. Spring, it was adopted April of 2010.
April 2010? Then, my question is, looking at the history of this law, this parcel, it appears that there was a rezoning from R3SL to R6 on 9/13/11, which would have been after the Hillside District Plan was adopted. My question, I guess, is, you think they would, would have made a difference in the Hillside District Plan if they had known that this was going to be an R6-zoned district rather than an R3SL, when they determined that it would be better suited as an urban street?
Through the Chair, Mr. Spring, the determination that this is urban was unrelated to the zoning, it was related to the fact that it's within ARDA. I don't know whether its status in ARDA changed at the time of rezoning, I don't believe it did, although I could be wrong, but that's what the Hillside District Plan makes its determination on, not anything relating to the zoning.
Well, through the Chair, are there other R6 districts then that are within ARDA on the hillside?
Through the Chair, Mr. Spring, we believe there are, but I'll have to confirm by finding the correct map.
Thank you. Commissioner Prus?
Thank you. Couple of quick questions. You referred to, when you... You refer to in your recommendation about the Department of Public Works and the utilities, requirements of the Department of Public Works and the electric utilities serving the subdivision. What, are those requirements enclosed with your recommendation here?
Through the chair, Mr. Pruez, are you referring to the electric utility? I'm sorry, I was confering with staff.
Well, it says, "Department recommendations, denial based on street lighting shall conform to the requirements of the Department of Public Works and the electric utilities serving the subdivision."
Yes, through the chair, Mr. Pruez, I did confer with the electric utility, and they have no standards that they would have for this, pertaining to this particular variance.
Well, what are their requirements? This doesn't meet their requirements. I'm looking for, actually, I'm looking for the Department of Public Works requirements.
Well, the Department of Public Works requirements come directly from the Design Criteria Manual.
Is there a specific section in that that you can forward to us? And then, what is the electric utilities requirements?
I conferred with the electric utility, and they have no standard. I spoke to a gentleman over there, and they said they, he's unaware, he spoke with his supervisor, and they're unaware of any standard that would pertain to that section of code.
So, there really isn't any requirements from the electric?
From the electric utility, no. The standard is more specifically Public Works requirements.
Okay. And then, Section B, you go into a, I guess it's an alternative, if the Commission finds that the four variances have been met, standards of variances, you talk about rescinding all previous variances. What, I guess, when I see something like that, I tend to like to know how they're interrelated and why, in the decision-making tree, on the other variances versus, it kind of just jumps out to me as it's another wheel that really wasn't addressed, as far as the other variances.
Through the chair, Mr. Pruez, the current variance has to do with continuous street lighting, which is a safety-related issue. And I related back to the previous approved variances, dealing with road grades and the side slope, which is indirectly related to safety, because we have overlapping variances that deal with safety issues. And my position is that they should all be dealt with together, instead of separate variances coming in for consideration that are related to safety issues on the roadway.
So, what you're saying is, the grade issues has to do something with sight distance?
The vertical curvature and the horizontal curvature would have to do with sight distances. The road grades, you know, as approved, are something like 30% steeper than the DCM maximum grade for a collector. And I believe that same gradient is also cited in the Hillside District Plan for larger, higher-capacity roads.
So, on the hillside, the variance, I think, is, what'd you say, 10.5% grade for roughly 1,000 feet? Is that about?
I believe it's some figure greater than that. I believe it's something over 2,000 feet.
Okay.
I'd have to look at the actual plans to give you.
And is there any place on the hillside that has that grade without the streetlights?
Well, there's many, well, now, we're talking local streets or collectors?
Any streets.
Well, there's many streets on the hillside that have greater than 10% grades.
Okay.
Many of those were pioneered in.
What, on the 10.5% grade, and I don't remember, I'm thinking about what this typical section of the road looked like, was it, was that road designed with a paved shoulder?
The proposed roadway?
Yeah, the proposed roadway.
I believe it has a paved shoulder.
And it was, and so, was there any requirement for any unpaved part of the road prism, you know, in this typical?
There is not a DCM requirement. I'm not sure if I'm following your direction, Mr. Pruez.
Well, what I remember about the paved section, when they, when I think testimony supported paving the shoulders for bicycles, and maybe runners or walkers, and I was concerned about, in the winter activities, when you pave a shoulder, you have, the car has no place to bail off the side where they could pick up maybe some rocks and gravel to help their braking action. And so, I'm wondering, with the streetlights and whatnot, is that, if the streetlights were in them, does that change that criteria at all? Are they related?
No, Mr. Pruez.
Okay.
Location of the streetlight is not related, no.
Okay. And it's your opinion that the streetlights that they have compared to what they're proposing is a safety issue?
I do.
Thank you.
Dana's answered all my questions. Thank you.
I've got one more question. In this morning, we received a copy of a letter from an attorney for the applicant dated April 18, 2013. Why did we receive that letter today and not earlier?
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson, to be quite honest with you, I did, I was forwarded that email, actually, through an email a while back. It was not actually in my staff, my actual staff folder, and I apologize, it did not get to you with the staff packet, I apologize.
Do we know if there's been any discussion between Mr. Wheeler and the applicant's attorney, or do we have any idea where that's going?
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson, I do not believe that Mr. Wheeler has made a determination on that. I've not received anything, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to follow up on Mr. Spring's question regarding R6 zoning in ARDSA. The majority of the area directly south of Ruth Arcand Park, between Ruth Arcand and DeArmond Road, is zoned R6 and within ARDSA, as well as a large, relatively large area that's to the west, I'm sorry, the east and southeast of Ruth Arcand, that is both within ARDSA and zoned R6. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Pruez, go ahead. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Spring?
Yes, another question I have is, the petitioner mentioned the fact that there's other streets on the hillside, like DeArmond, which I believe are owned by the DOT, have intermittent streetlights and have much higher speeds, and, of course, and so, I guess the implication is that with the lower speeds on this street, that it may not be necessary, since the standards appear to be met on other streets on the hillside. But I wondered your opinion about the speeds on this collector road, because I know it's a really exceptionally long collector road, and probably not really advisable to have that as a collector road, given the propensity of persons to try to get from point A to point B as quickly as possible, and given a 30 mile an hour speed limit, it could be quite a lengthy trip down that Potter Valley Road, especially if you're down towards the end of it. I was wondering if you have any speed studies that show the effect of this type of collector facility, length of it in particular, on speeds, and whether or not you think 30 miles an hour will be adhered to typically?
Through the chair. I don't believe that I have any recent speed studies on the lower section of Potter Valley Road I'd have to concern, confer with my data section. My name is Stephanie Marmillo, I'm the traffic engineer, sorry for not introducing myself. We recently have conducted speed studies, I guess, on, if you want to call similar roadways, and another Class 1 collector that is on hillside, Golden View, they're doing the upgrade of it, and recently did a speed study on it, and its speeds are significantly greater than the posted speed, almost, I believe, almost 10 miles an hour over the posted speed. And in this section, the actual, the design speed is 30 miles per hour, but the proposed posted speed in this section would be 25 miles an hour. But with the steep downgrades, I mean, on the uphill side, you may be closer to the posted speed, just because fighting gravity and depending on the size of the vehicle. But going downhill, like you said, with the length that they'll have to travel to actually get to the adjacent arterial, which is all the way down to the Seward Highway, and the steep grades going down, I personally have serious doubts that this speed limit is going to be adhered to. And my other concern with that is, as was mentioned, the shoulders are paved for the use of bicyclists and pedestrians, because there is no separated pedestrian facility that's accessible. There is a trail that's kind of vertically and horizontally separated for the use of the neighborhood, kind of a nature trail, per se. But if there's any pedestrians that want to travel down this roadway and bicyclists, they will be on the shoulder of this roadway.
Could you please state your name for the record, please? Thank you.
I'm sorry, I stated it in the middle. I'm Stephanie Marmillo, I'm the municipal traffic engineer.
Thank you.
I have one more question to follow up, if I may, Chair, Mr. Chair. Regarding the variance, I understand from the staff that it's either or. Either you, we approve the variance, and there are no streetlights, basically, required, or we deny the variance, and there's 32 or so streetlights that would have to be put in to meet the standard. The follow-up, I think, at the end of the report suggested that there might be a compromise, but I'm not sure how that would work. It says that you'd like to see, if we do approve it, you'd like to see some conditions that we reconsider all of the amendments, all the variances at a later date. And there's two variances. One is steepness of the grade, and the other variance involved, or rather, I guess it wasn't a variance, it was the driveway permit, the number of driveways. It doesn't seem to me that there's any real flexibility in the steepness of the grade because of the nature of the terrain. And I, so I guess I fail to see how, considering all the variances, would really help resolve the matter, and how we could try to compromise with that type of resolution.
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, thank you for bringing some of these issues to the forefront. At the time that the applicant applied for this variance from the subdivision standards, they had not applied for a variance from the DCM standards, which was more of an administrative relief provision. Mr. Whitfield had stated that their proposal, their lighting proposal that went in with their road design information into Public Works had very minimal lighting. It was actually three lights, not five. And, it was five? Oh, well, sorry. Okay, it was five lights. And they had not applied for a DCM, and so, the traffic department said, "No, five lights is not enough, and since this is an urban collector, you know, the standard is then continuous lighting." They have now, since this time, they have applied for, the applicant has applied for a variance from the DCM standards. That seems the appropriate way to find the middle ground between five lights and continuous lighting, rather than approving a subdivision variance, which leaves you with, well, we don't know what the standard is. By denying the subdivision variance and letting the DCM variance process work itself out, there seems to be a good opportunity for the appropriate middle ground to be reached. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, I guess the question I would have been to follow up, what's the staff opinion about the nature of some type of variance, the DCM, and whether they would be flexible, to some extent, to reduce the number of streetlights from 32 to something less, maybe, perhaps?
Through the chair. It's an ongoing conversation, and the variance was submitted to us Thursday at about lunchtime. And I've had the chance to briefly flip through it and review. I haven't fully gone through. There are a certain number of warrants. The Federal Highway Administration does have a warrant analysis that we'll look at to determine whether or not lighting is required for a road. And you can go through, and there's kind of values and weighing factors for different geometric components, the grades, the horizontal curves, how many driveway breaks there are, that sort of thing. And then, it continues on as to what the adjacent development looks like, whether it's densely populated or rural, and then it also considers, that's the last thing it considers, but there's a number of considerations to look at whether or not lighting should be considered. That was one of the things that was submitted as part of the packet that I need to go through and review to make sure that all the calculations are there. In the conversation, I mean, in looking at the Hillside District Plan and the desires and the surrounding neighborhood, I don't know if I completely believe that continuous lighting is the right answer for this. But if I had to choose between five lights and continuous lighting, I'm going to err on the side of safety and go with continuous lighting. Now that we've started the discussion and gone further, and there's been other proposals of looking at other options other than just five lights, and looking at the safety factors, and where our conflicts are, I think the conversation has started, and we're moving towards a resolution that is more acceptable to all parties included. Because I know that I've heard from the Rabbit Creek Community Council, from Halo, from others that have been involved in the Hillside District Plan, that it's not their desire to have continuous lighting, because it's not, it doesn't fit in the context of the neighborhood. And I hear that, and I'm a reasonable person, but I have to err on the side of safety, and so now we're working through that process. And do I think we have the answer yet? I can't say for sure. Like I said, I haven't had the full time since Thursday afternoon to review the packet.
Commissioner Pruez?
Thanks. You brought up the question I was going to ask about the community input with Halo and the Rabbit Creek Community Council. Reading through this real quick, they're actually, they're opposing the lighting. So, that being said, is it the department's position that something like this, where you feel there's a, back to a, if you have to err on the safety side, that you put forth that recommendation, and then that kind of exonerates what the department is, if it's changed by a commission or the Assembly? Is that typically what happens, if, when the communities, surrounding communities don't want to see what the department is recommending or acquiring?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. I get, no, it's not standard practice, I guess, for us to, I'd say typically, it is our answer that we want things to conform to the DCM and the requirements of the DCM, but there is a process for variance. And until Thursday last week, a formal variance request has never been submitted with justification saying why something less than the standards of the DCM is appropriate. And that's kind of, that's usually the process that, I guess, is held. I would say typically, it does not come to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Well, I bring it up because a while back before the Commission was the Golden View upgrade, where it connects into Rabbit Creek, and on that, there was a light, continuous lighting down the improvements, which, again, the community council and residents vehemently opposed. And ultimately, I guess, it went to the Assembly, and the Assembly agreed with the community, the local community, I guess, I heard the mayor then vetoed it, and the Assembly then overwritten it. And I see kind of the same pattern going here. And I'm just wondering, that brought the question up, do you use the Assembly or this body to change something that you feel you're restricted, that you can't change personally or because of your own Design Criteria Manual that you folks, it looks like, have put together?
I don't think I'm restricted by the Design Criteria Manual, per se. We are working on updating it. The, I guess, the difficulty that comes up is, everybody keeps asking about a rural lighting standard. And nationwide, there is not a rural lighting standard. There are lighting levels that are recommended for different classifications of road, whether that's local collector, ulterior freeway, and above. And then, there are guidelines for rural lighting, both the International Illuminating Engineering Society of North America, which is IESNA, which is, puts out, that's what the DCM is based upon. And then, there's the ASHTO standards, which is the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Official Standards. And both of those have recommended lighting levels, which are very, very similar to each other. And then, like I said, they have kind of rural recommendations. That's the one portion that is missing from the DCM, that in this update of the DCM that we're working on, is we're trying to en- we're working on is we're trying to incorporate kind of more guidelines for rural lighting and how to address these situations, because there are conflicts.
Yeah, and I guess that's my concern, is that we've had two hillside projects before us in the last six months, and both hiccups have been with lighting. And I'm just trying to get to what, if any, the resolution is, and if there's more road improvements or new roads on the hillside, which is really about the only place the community can expand, are we going to end up with, you know, lighting, lighting, lighting? And why, and what can we do, I guess, as a community to get the standard, we'll call it an Anchorage standard, doesn't have to be a national standard, where it's a lot of time and effort, both on staff's part and the developer's part and/or whatever entity is, a government entity is trying to improve a section of a road.
We agree. And because it's become a noticeable conflict, that's why we're working towards resolution. Prior to these two cases, to my knowledge, this issue hasn't been as severe or hasn't created such a conflict previously.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dean.
Through the Chair, my question of staff is, on the DCM, which is part of, I believe, Title 23, am I correct?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Dean, no, the DCM, the Design Criteria Manual is not part of the code.
So it's just a floating document that the administration has written? It's not part of code, correct?
It is not part of code. Think of it as a collection of local design practices.
Okay, so...
That evolved over the years.
So you've written this document, now I need a variance. How do I apply for a variance? And how is that routed through the system? And what board or commission actually votes on that variance?
First of all, typically, a board or commission historically has not voted on a variance. The seven technical chapters of the Design Criteria Manual each have a section which address the respective variant, their variance process for those respective chapters. The first four chapters, the variance is submitted by the applicant to the municipal engineer, that would be myself. Two of the chapters dealing with traffic, "streetlights" and "traffic controls," I think it's titled, are addressed to the traffic engineer, Ms. Marmello. And I would have to go back to the manual to see what the transit guideline, criteria, where they go. Probably go to the Transit Department.
So isn't that a circular argument when the group that has written the document is also determining the variance? Shouldn't there be, in my opinion, I believe there should be, a commission or board that should oversee that variance, just like we do in a rezone? Or the change in the length of a cul-de-sac? Why is the DCM separate and not overseen by a board or commission for variances?
Historically, the Design Criteria Manual has not been overseen by a board or commission. It's evolved over the past several decades. I'm aware that the earliest Design Criteria Manual that I'm aware of is dated, I believe, 1974. It was a collection of criteria by the former city and the former borough. There was a later addition was in the later 70s, and then 1988, and then finally in 2007. Variances have been handled in the manner that I've, we've tried to describe tonight, and the appeals thus far have gone to one of the respective directors, typically the Director of Public Works, but the public transportation criteria, I'm presuming, would go to the Public Transportation Department Director.
Would that be Ron Thompson?
Public Works Director would be Ron Thompson. Public Transportation is Lance Wilber.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson.
A couple of points. I'm concerned about the use of the word "variance," because when I checked it, a variance is a permission to depart from the literal requirements of a zoning ordinance by virtue of unique hardship. We don't have a zoning ordinance here. We have a manual of practice, and so I don't know if it's a variance. To me, that elevates the Design Criteria Manual to the same level of the various codes we work with. So this is just a change to a manual of standard practice. And so I think the use of the word "variance" in this case is an error. The second point, the state of Alaska has a lot of rural roads. The state of Alaska seems to be able to provide lighting that is, in my opinion, adequate and fine for rural roads. How can they have a standard that the city can't seem to adopt? I mean, you said that you're working with ASHTO and these other ones, and they work great in urban situations, but they don't work in rural. Why can't you look at the state's requirements?
Through the Chair, Mr. Ferguson. We look at other criteria as the applicant provides justification, provides the compelling justification for their variance. I've looked at variances over the years over a wide variety of topics. And I commonly refer to ASHTO and others in trying to, in evaluating the request. Is it well justified? The responsibility for that justification, I maintain, lies with the applicant. So as Ms. Marmello said, we just received their formal variance request sometime on Thursday, and I have a copy of it in my email, but I've not had the opportunity to look at it yet. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for the staff? Okay, we'll have the petitioner's representative, I assume that they're here, and you have 10 minutes. And do you want to reserve any of that for rebuttal?
Thank you, through the Chair and members of the Commission. My name's Don McLintock. Ashburn Mason, on behalf of the petitioner. And we are going to reserve some of our time for rebuttal. With me tonight, of course, is Mr. Rick Davidge.
How much time did you want to reserve?
I'd like to reserve at least three minutes, please. Rick Davidge, the representative developer. I have Dave Grenier, the civil engineer from Trade Engineering, who can speak to civil issues you may raise. James Marshall from EPS, our lighting engineering consultant, and my colleague Rebecca Went. And I'll probably defer to all of them as you have questions that might require issues of expertise. Now, the request for you today is to grant a variance to allow streetlight in Potter Highland subdivision to be consistent with the past practices of the department, consistent with the Hillside Development Plan, and consistent with the clear wishes of Halo, Rabbit Creek Community Council, and the Potter Creek Homeowners Association, a concurrence, at least in my experience, is relatively unique. To get into some of the background issues before I go into the meat of the argument, the first issue is, this is only about lighting. We strongly disagree with staff's idea that a prior granted variance, which is now an entitlement, a permission that this board has granted, that we have spent considerable sums in design money bringing the road that frankly is ready for a permit, except for this lighting issue, to suddenly be all up for grabs. So we're here for lighting, and lighting alone, the wishes of the commission, of course, will determine whether it's favorable or not. We do agree that the condition of the road with the variances is an appropriate subject for you to consider, and as we get into the details, I can explain to you why those aren't significant. The second issue, and I won't, because actually Commissioner Dean said it better than I'll say, I'll just say, we're here because we believe you're the right body to decide this. We believe that the DCM variance is circular, it's not a legal process, it's not a legal document, but it is a variance request because the code says that lighting is set by a deferral to staff. They have made a decision requiring 32 continuous lights on this stretch. We disagree, we have valid reasons to disagree, and we've brought it to this body for a resolution. Now, first of all, this is a rural road, there's no question. This is R6, and there's an interesting background from Potter Creek Development. As you know, historically, under the master plan, it was all R3SL. With the development of the Hillside District Plan, the wishes of the local community, market realities, we have rezoned this part of the project as R6. And under 2185020, this is a rural improvement district. And that is the standard under the Plating Code that sets what improvements required in different zoning districts. We are not urban under that. The fact that the DCM may have, and, you know, references, and you do have a little historical issue here, because historically, if you look at ARTSA, it ends at DeArmen to the south, there's a little jog, and it ends at Elmore and Abbott Loop to the east, again with a little jog. Most of the hillside is not within ARTSA. Rabbit Creek was put in ARTSA because it was to be developed as an R3 high-density subdivision with lots of homes, lots of traffic. That has changed. The special circumstances are exactly as staff put it. We have a rural section of road here in ARTSA. There is no ARTSA standard governing rural roads. That is a special circumstance. Staff has had three years since the passage of the Hillside District Plan with its clear mandate to set standards, dark side standards, to come up with one, and it has not. And as a result, we have been forced to come to you and ask for this variance today. So that is the first condition. The special circumstance is not the grade or anything like that. It is the fact that staff has not set a realistic standard to apply to this type of road, which is R6 and rural. The other interesting thing about it is, we have a type of road, and I think it's very clear the commission's familiar with it, but grade has been made an issue here as a factual issue. And I draw your attention to numerous examples. And these are arterials, these aren't collectors. These are a higher-volume road with higher traffic, higher speeds. Hillside Drive, the corner that leaves Service High School in the park as it goes up towards Upper O'Malley, 10.8% grade. Think of O'Malley, O'Malley Road in general, above Birch as it heads up to Hillside Drive. Think of portions of Rabbit Creek Road. There are numerous instances of grade. And if you look at this particular stretch, what we are dealing with is a relatively long stretch that starts at about 5%. I believe 20% of, or 30% of the project is 10%, still gradual uphill. A portion of it is 10.5%, about 20% of the road. It goes down to 5% at the curve, and then it's, for another 2,000 feet or about 50% of the project, it is 8% or less. So grade alone is, I'm sorry, line of sight, which appropriately pointed out, these are relatively straight shots. You have good line of sight. So we have submitted a seven-light standard with the variance application. Now, this is not, the variance application is not new, there have been informal discussions. We just decided that we might as well put something in front of them so they could act upon it. But the rationales and all that were there. And we've proposed a seven-light solution, which basically is at the intersections, which is consistent with the Hillside District Plan, and also at the curve. And it's in the handouts, I think, it's the last page of the handouts we gave to you. As you can see, the 32-light plan that staff has said that is required by ARTSA makes absolutely no distinction between the 8% grade and the 10.5% grade. So the literal application of ARTSA leads to, frankly, results that are inconsistent, even with the criteria that staff has articulated. We dispute the fact that this is injurious to the public. Like we say, there's numerous examples, and certainly Mr. Marshall can get into the lighting details. As I understand it, just very briefly, too much light can be dangerous. And one thing to keep in mind, South Point, which is the subdivision just south, which was developed two years ago, has absolutely no lights in it at all. So under the continuous lighting scheme, drivers are going to be driving several thousand feet with illumination, and then they're going to drive into dark. And as you can see, that is not what you want to do in a safe lighting. For the last 30 years, Potter Valley Road has been developed with non-continuous lighting under the same DCM ARTSA criteria before rezoning. That is all R3, that is all urban. And yet they approved it. They approved South Point. So part of the reason why I've come for the variance today is, the standard has changed. They may say it's the literal language, but this is the first time we know of that they're at least applying it on this road. And that's why we need your help. We do not believe, of course, it will nullify the comprehensive plan. It actually implements the Hillside District Plan, Dark Skies philosophy. We acknowledge that safety should be part of it, which is why we have lights at the intersections and at the curves. And the undue hardship is to the community. The whole community doesn't want this bright string of lights, I'll use one minute of that if I could, please, that light, string of lights, high up on the hillside. So we would ask that you grant our variance. I do have a form of motion and the actual drawing that if I could circulate with you for your consideration to grant the relief that we asked for. Thank you.
And it looks like you have about 2 minutes and 56 seconds, 58 seconds.
Thank you, I'll cherish every one of those.
And do we have any questions from the Commission? Mr. Dean, I'm sorry.
Through the Chair. Now, you've applied for your DCM variance. What if you need to appeal? What will that process be?
Well, the reason why we've always considered appropriate to go for this board is there's an articulated process for appealing the decisions by both staff or ourselves. There is no written procedure for the DCM. It is basically told to us as to what we're supposed to do. And I believe your comments earlier hit us the same way, which is, we're appealing to the same person who made the decision. I just don't consider that an appeal in any sort of common law, sort of concept of due process.
So just for clarification, you apply for a variance from the DCM, and if you need to appeal that decision, what's the process for that?
That was one of the issues we were trying to engage with Mr. Wheeler on. I guess one could argue that the next step is Superior Court, which to me is, sets the very careful process of commission review of these sorts of decisions on instead. I mean, it should go through some sort of process before this body, not straight to a Superior Court judge.
So right now, we're in June, early June. And if we approve this with your suggested changes, you still have a variance pending on the DCM. Will that, do you need that dealt with before you guys can start building your road? I mean, what's our construction season's going to get eaten up really quick? I'm just kind of curious how this is going to proceed through the system.
It's a very interesting question. I mean, our position is, this body speaks with the legal authority of the municipality. So it would be our position, if we receive the relief that we asked for, that we would be able to ask the staff to implement it. If they refuse, then I guess we have to do what you do when people refuse, and we'd have to ask for judicial assistance.
Are you waiting for the DCM variance to be completed before you can start construction? That was, I'm sorry, that was my question.
Only if they make us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Spring.
Yes, through the Chair. You mentioned the lower part of Potter Valley Road, and lower part of Potter Valley Road has admitted streetlights. It looks like it has more streetlights per mile than what you're proposing. Perhaps there's a reason for that. But there is a difference between the lower part and the upper part, in that there aren't driveways directly connected to the street, they're all intersections. So, and you're, in this particular development that you're asking for the variance, there's, most of the lots are with driveways onto the street, and it appears that there's a fairly steep slope going on the south side involving that driveway. Also guardrails that could create a problem, also according to staff. And there's also a shoulder that's going to be utilized for pedestrians as well as bicyclists. So I guess my question is, do you see there, this problem, this kind of design, as well as the number of driveways, that, does that create an exception to your conclusion that it doesn't need to have streetlights?
I think the labor response, and certainly we can direct a specific lighting question to Mr. Marshall, but the lower part, of course, Potter Valley Road, you're absolutely right, the driveways have not gone onto it. It does have quite a few more lights because it actually has quite a few more turns and switchbacks. If you look at the map, you see how it sort of bends around. If you look at the, um, map, you see how it sort of bends around. The issue of driveways and the need for lighting, and I can give you my example since I live on O'Malley. Uh, if you, as you leave Birch and you go up and you go past the church and you go past the turnoff to the elementary school, there are driveways all the way on the right side from there all the way up to Hillside Drive. There is no light at my intersection, which is Ridge Crest, and there's no light at the next intersection up. It's a fifty mile an hour speed limit, and it has a substantial grade going down. So my assumption is that DOT assumed that headlight illumination in those circumstances was sufficient, and the fact that cars pulling out of driveways have headlights on, and that people on the roads have headlights on, in the dark, you can actually see. The purpose of lighting is to illuminate us, I guess, a special danger. And there's, you know, certainly, I think Mr. Marshall can give more specific responses. But that's, that's the issue we'd be, you know, debating. And, uh, but again, I don't believe that that moves us into the urban standards because of just the difference in volumes. The average daily count of this is, we're barely in the collector level. It's going to be the two thousand, twenty-five hundred average daily traffic when it's fully developed. So at this point, it's actually almost like a local road until it gets developed further.
Mr. Chair, one more question. Um, thank you. Um, so what is the pertinent standards here? I heard reference of ASHTO standards, um, that would be applied if it went into the variance procedure with the municipality. Have you examined this proposed lighting scheme in relation to the ASHTO standards? And do you think it meets the ASHTO standards?
One of the reasons why we submitted, um, the variance request as part of our packet is we, uh, Mr., um, I'm sorry, Mr. Grenier with this, is Mr. Marshall went through the warrant system that DOT uses whether lights are required at all, and there's a cutoff of sixty, and it considers any number of variables, including accident patterns and things like that. This road actually comes out as not requiring any lights. So under what we believe the federal standard, we, we could make a case for no illumination whatsoever. The applicable standard here frankly, and the problem we have, is that because it is a municipally governed road, we're waiting for staff to come up with a standard. I think frankly, staff would agree that thirty-two is excessive, that continuous lighting, which makes it go to, you realize the reason why you have thirty-two, with continuous lighting, you can't have light and dark. You can't just keep, so you have to keep phasing it in and out. So, um, so then the question is, what is the standard they would approve? And all we can do is look at the other standards in our community, the Hillside District Plan, and suggest to where we believe to be a safe proposal under the circumstances, in, in light of the absence of any staff standard to be applied here.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Ms. Wint has had most of the conversations, and I don't know, is there anything to update on that?
I received an email from Mr. Wheeler.
Would you want to come on it?
For the record, Rebecca Wint. I received an email from Mr. Wheeler on Friday, and we had a brief exchange. I responded to him. He noted a few things from my letter, but didn't, um, did not respond substantively to our request for resolution of the issue.
Did he have any engagement with finding on resolution?
No, he didn't. We'd requested a meeting, and he offered a meeting when we, when he emailed on Friday. But at this point, we were so close to the hearing, to this public hearing, that it seemed too short a time period to make that happen.
Commissioner Prue?
Thank you. Uh, I would like to hear from the, you say you have a lighting engineer?
Yes.
As far as the differences between thirty-two lights, your proposed seven lights and no lights, and, and, and you talked about going in the dark and out in the light and back and forth, and what that does. And, and so maybe, maybe I could get a little more elaboration on, on, uh, sight distances and, you know, headlights, how far they see, and how wide, and all that kind of stuff.
Sure. This is, uh, Mr. James Marshall.
Well, I guess, um, what question specifically did you have, or?
Well, it's more of a general. I mean, the, the, the staff is, is, you know, reverting to the most, you know, being cautious in, on, from a, sort of a safety standpoint, and I guess that's why there's thirty-two lights. And so I'd like to hear your opinion on why seven lights would, would, would be adequate versus no lights versus thirty-two lights.
Well, with the seven lights, what we've done is we've given you the same amount of illumination that you would get with the thirty-two lights, and it's just, um, we've, uh, we did the intersections. We illuminated the intersections because those are points that we, we were really focused on. We wanted to make sure that those were the most safe. It's my opinion that continuously lighting the, the entire stretch there, when the rest of the road is not lit to any standard by what we can tell, uh, it actually creates, what, what the proposed light level is that's there is, um, the best example I can think of is Strawberry. So what they propose is lighting the road to Strawberry light levels and then turning it black. So I don't know if any of you have ever walked inside from outside. Your light, your eyes are going to adjust to the light, and when you walk inside, there's going to be a point where you can't really see very well inside until your eyes adjust again. And so that's essentially what you're doing, is you're, you're bathing a person in light for a long period of time. Uh, I want to say half a mile. Is that right? So you're bathing, bathing this person in light, their eyes are cut, their eyes are adjusting to that light, and then you're dropping it off and leaving them to their own devices. That, in my mind, creates a larger hazard than if you were to just illuminate the intersections, to where you're in and out of the intersection in a very short period of time. We have gone through the process of illuminating the intersections to the higher light level for those intersections, for the collector level, even though those, that light isn't necessarily an appropriate amount of light, because you're in that continuous lighting, you're, it's assumed that the light levels, the one-point-two-foot candles that we are putting on the, the intersection, the southernmost intersection, we call it the switch, we've been calling it the switchback, uh, that's Potter Valley Road at the bottom. That intersection, the one-point-two-foot candles assumes that you're in continuous light. So what that is, is that's bringing the light up a little bit. The average light levels, I want to say, are point eight-foot candles. So what you're doing is you're increasing your light level just a little bit so that, oh, I'm realizing, yes, I'm coming to an intersection, it's bringing my eyes to that intersection, I'm, I'm becoming more aware and trying to become, trying to orient myself in a way that, uh, hey, there's something, there's something I need to be cautious of up ahead. So what we've had to do is add some extra lights to, you know, to give you a transition into and out of those intersections, because it's so bright.
So, so does that have any, does that have any, does that have any, if you had a switchback like that and the grade was essentially flat or less than five percent, uh, was, is the assumption being that you'd still want the lights to bring your attention to the switch, to a switchback?
Sure.
Okay. So the grade is, is, is one issue, but you would still want, you'd still want the attention on a switchback?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anytime you lose line of sight, you want to make sure that the, the driver's attention is brought to that, that area.
Uh-huh. And then, and then the road, typical, I asked this before, if I remember right, the, the, there's eight or ten-foot wide paved shoulders on the road. Is that correct?
Four foot.
Four foot? Okay. And it's a, how wide's the road? Ten feet? Twelve?
Eleven-foot lanes with four-foot paved shoulder and one-foot gravel.
Okay.
Just for the record, that was Mr. Grenier, said eleven-foot lanes and four-foot shoulders.
Yeah. Any issue with pedestrians walking alongside the, the, or bicycles in, in the shoulder seasons?
One of the, um, one of the lights that we proposed is actually at the pedestrian crossing. That's designed for where the pedestrians cross. If you look at the accident history for the lower part of Potter Valley Road, um, all the accidents have occurred during the daytime. In fact, they're strangely clustered around school hours, but, um, there's not a history of nighttime accidents. We, we don't believe the usage is the issue here.
We have a separate pedestrian.
Right. And, and there is an actual, and was a large part of the development of this, to have a separate pedestrian that was designed for the type of use that this community wanted on the pedestrian trail. They, they actually wanted a more natural trail removed from the road.
Thank you.
Commissioner Spring?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Um, the, appears that there was a item laid on the table by the petitioner regarding, uh, a proposed motion that we could adopt. And it involves a, something I'm sure is allowed or not. I'd just like staff's, um, opinion regarding it. I'm assuming you gave staff the, uh, motion?
Oh, okay.
Um, and it, it says basically that we approved the variance, uh, with the lighting configuration as depicted on, in Exhibit A, and that's the seven lights that we've been discussing. Can you, and my question is for staff, is can you make a variance with, um, exception to an variance, or can you condition a variance like that? Isn't it just either or? Or is it possible to do what they ask?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, you can condition a variance to make it appropriate for, um, public health, safety, and welfare.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ferguson?
We have had this agreement on prior projects regarding.
Commissioner Ferguson, thank you.
In the definition of an intersection. In your testimony, did you consider a driveway an intersection?
No.
So your testimony was based on that a driveway was not an intersection?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dean?
Through the chair, um, I have a question of the lighting engineer. Could you clarify for me that there is no national standard for rural lighting in the United States?
There, there's, there's no such thing as a lighting code. The only thing that makes lighting code is a municipal directive that is, you know, lighting is very subjective. It's very much about the person that's in that position viewing the light. There's a significant, a significant amount of, um, uh, standard that goes into, um, national standard and, um, and state standard and, and municipal standard that, uh, that no one, there, there's not a, there's not an N E C of light. If that makes any sense, the National Electric Code is not, there's no light code. It's all a series of recommended practices. And the only thing that we have to go off of is, this is what we've done in the past, and this is what seems to work for us. Now, that's a very generalized way to say it, but, I mean, that's basically what it is.
If I could supplement Mr. Marshall's response to them, my understanding, is it correct that the, um, seven-light standard you've, that we proposed is, is consistent with the standards that have been articulated by the, is it the illuminating engineers? Was it I E S?
I E S, N A, yes. North America, yes.
N A, North of America. So there is a set of professional judgment standards that you look to?
The intersections are, are led to the R P A, I E S, N A, R P A standards. They're not, but they're not, they're recommended practices. The recommended practices, then, they're not really standards. I don't know about the terminology, but.
Okay. And then to become a lighting engineer, I assume you're an electrical engineer?
Yes.
And you went on to the Illuminating Society to be certified in those particular areas?
I've done a significant amount of work, uh, in, in, with the I E S. There's been a significant amount of education that I've done post, uh, my electrical engineering degree, yes.
Okay. And you do lighting plans currently for roads and parking lots and that sort of thing right now?
Yes.
Okay. And you work primarily in Anchorage?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the petitioners? Okay. And, thank you, sir. You have two minutes and fifty seconds remaining.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, how many people do we have for the public hearing that want to have testimony? Two, two or three? Okay, that's fine. Then we'll open up the public testimony at this time. Uh, a reminder that you have three minutes as an individual. And would you please state your name and who you represent, if you represent a group? And, um, spell and say your last name, please.
I'm Diane Holmes, and I'm here to implore you to uphold our adopted plans. Twenty-twenty calls for neighborhood and district plans, which are regional-specific plans designed to protect neighborhood character, a hallmark of twenty-twenty. D C M does not trump the Hillside District Plan. Rather, our plan says the D C M will include additions specific to the Hillside goals in Part Two. D C M can be changed at a flash without public process, but it must not ignore adopted plans. If it and Title Twenty-One could do so, then there would be no point in having district plans. Hillside Plans specifies that our road system must reflect rural character and geography of the area with flexible standards varied for context and low ambient light. Staff report says that no lighting standards are in place, yet lighting for safety is called for. Yes, the Hillside Plan does say that, at intersections only. Staff cites the need to follow current subdivision lighting standards, the D C M and the Hillside Plan. But the Hillside Plan hasn't developed these details yet, and urban standard should not apply. Lower Potter Valley Road may be in ARTSA with its higher density, but the end of the pavement, the density is low, traffic will be minimal, thus in no way should it be considered urban. For your information, Tim Potter told me long ago that the lower Potter Valley Road has an average of eight percent, not maximum. In fact, Rabbit Creek and DeArman are over fourteen percent in, grade in some sections, and lighting is nearly nonexistent. Let's be clear. The Hillside Plan was passed by citizens with specific intent for night skies. Upper Potter Valley Road was reclassified by the city the day after Title Twenty-One was passed, and you should ask why. Most hillside roads are not lighted, even DOT's arterials. So the sudden reclassifying of Potter Valley is not based on science, rather it's a political vindictiveness like I have not seen before. The Rabbit Creek Council supports the Hillside Plan, not specific developers. And we don't bother with things about developers' hardships. All variances obtained for this development adhere to the Hillside District Plan and geography. By the way, we're working on rural lighting standards. Citizens get really discouraged when we spend our evenings presenting written and verbal testimony only to be dismissed so often. And now we're asked to defend the Hillside District Plan that we spent years preparing simply because of some, some grudge on the eighth floor and in public works. That isn't how planning should work. We're tired of misrepresentations and pettiness. Please, um, pass this variance without rehashing the other variances. And, Mr. Spring, I can answer the question that staff could not earlier, if you wish. Me too.
Thank you for your testimony. We have any questions? Don't see any questions. Thank you for your testimony.
My name is Mike Kenny, K E N N Y. I am a board member of both Rabbit Creek Community Council and HALO, and I'm speaking to you tonight on the behest of HALO. The Hillside District Plan in HALO, our conversations, there's two or three board members that were on the Citizens Advisory Committee, uh, very, very knowledgeable, some, planning and zoning folks at S A S Commissioners where you're sitting today. And this really boils down to the expectations of the people and what was told to the folks on the. to the expectations of the people and what was told to the folks on the hillside as far as rural character. That was very, very important. Drainage was important. Other things were important, but the rural character was probably the trump. I don't believe a lot of folks understood, there's, most of us are not in artsa. Most of us are not in one of the rural road service areas that can bond. Goldenview Drive, I had no idea Potter was until this cropped up, and others. So there's no real understanding that if you're in artsa, that corridor is considered to be urban. That didn't strike probably 70% of us. So this comes as a surprise that we are going to be held to urban standards when we quite obviously live in a rural area, which the Hillside District Plan completely points out. I'll read for you just a bit of the resolution that HALO put forth. I don't think they wanted me going from script too much, so here we go. "The Resolution of the Hillside Home and Land Owners Organization Regarding the Street Lighting on the Hillside and the Variance Requests Submitted by Potter Creek Development LLC in Planning and Zoning Case S-11864-6. Whereas a home and land owners organization was founded in 1969 by residents of the southeast Anchorage to promote a rural way of life in a community of low-density settlement. And whereas a survey of hillside residents for the Hillside District Plan found that, quote, 'the majority of residents in all areas are satisfied with street lighting in their neighborhood.' The majority of residents in each area either indicated that lighting is in place and is adequate, or that lighting is not in place, but they do not want it." This came from a hillside area household survey by the municipality. "Whereas in 2010, the Muni adopted the Hillside District Plan as an element of the Anchorage Comprehensive Plan to govern development in southeast Chris." And whereas a specific goal of the Hillside District Plan is to preserve the rural character of the area. And whereas Policy 14-0 of the Hillside District Plan calls for street lighting strategies that preserve the dark sky character of the areas. And whereas on February 26, 2013, the Municipal Assembly adopted an amendment on revised Title 21 of the Anchorage Municipal Code, setting a standard for lighting on collector-level road rays in rural areas that meet the clear desires of the area. And whereas the arterial roads on the hillside have intermittent lighting, primarily at main intersections and some locations with safety issues, indicating that this level of lighting meets generally accepted safety standards. Therefore, HALO finds that the street lighting proposed by Potter Creek LLC for the Potter Highlands is consistent with lighting on similar roads on the hillside. The Hillside District Plan, Policy 14-0, the amendment to Title 21 adopted on February 26, 2013, and the desires of the citizens are stated through the survey. And HALO finds that the proposal for as many as 42 streetlights along Potter Valley Road within Potter Highlands is excessive. And HALO supports the variance request submitted by Potter Creek Development LLC in Planning and Zoning Case Number S-11864-6." Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Do we have any questions? Oh, sorry. Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, I had one. Have you had a chance to look at the seven street, or seven light plan that was presented tonight and where those lights are? Have you had a chance to review that?
It didn't come before us in a meeting, and I didn't, I wasn't copied with the, thank you.
I am now, though. Yeah, and I understand now you would not be speaking on behalf of HALO, but real quick, any assessments, any thoughts on it?
I'm very familiar with this area. It would seem to me that, and I live on a road that connects indirectly Goldenview with the Old Sort Highway. It's north of Potter Creek. It's the first road north of Potter Creek. Our grade is 23.5% over a half a mile. So when we see a 10.25% grade, we call it flatlands. I would say that, I'm not a lighting expert, but what they have had seems to work. They did a study that over the last decade, there has been zero accidents on the lower stretcher road during nighttime. Yes, it doesn't have driveways coming in, but it certainly speaks to a propensity that this is an adequate lighting strategy that they have.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for your testimony.
You bet.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will close. Okay, that's right. We have, rebuttal, I guess, Mr. McClintock? You have two minutes and 50 seconds.
Actually, we actually have nothing further to add, other than we're, if the testimonies raise any other questions, we'd be happy to respond to them.
Any questions from any of the commissioners? Seeing none, hearing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With that being said, we will close the testimony in this case, and we'll, it'll be closed now. Thank you. Okay. Do you guys want to take a break? Take about a, take a five-minute break? We'll take about a five-minute break and then come back. Thank you. And we're back in session, and I'll be looking for a motion, a positive motion on this case. And Commissioner Dean's?
Through the chair.
Seconded by Commissioner Pruse.
Through the chair, I motion to move on Case S-1184, I'm sorry, 11864-6, the Potter Highlands subdivision, request for subdivision variance from AMC 21.85.110, street lighting, which states, "Street lighting shall conform to the requirements of the Department of Public Works and electric utilities serving the subdivision." I move to approve the variance wording supplied by the petitioner. This particular wording states, "I move to approve Potter Creek Development LLC's request for a variance to permit installation of non-continuous lighting in compliance with the Hillside District Plan on Potter Valley Road within the Potter Highlands subdivision, lots 1 through 11, Block 1, lots 1 through 6, Block 2, lots 1 through 9, Block 3, lots 1 through 4, Block 4, and tracks A4A, A4B, A4C, and B3, as depicted on the attached Exhibit A." On the attached Exhibit A, it shows a seven streetlight option. Those streetlights are at intersections and at curves on the roadway.
We have a second on that. And Commissioner Spring?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I won't be supporting the motion for basic reason. I think...
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm waiting for the, I need to change. Primarily, I think, it is the responsibility of the traffic engineer to review traffic lighting plans. This particular proposal was laid on the table tonight. Traffic engineering staff has not had an opportunity to review it. There's no, we have to take the word of the petitioner that it meets the requirements, whatever standards they cited. I would like personally hear the discussion by the staff as to whether or not they think this meets the standards. Because there's always room for interpretation in the standards, if you ever dealt with them. Of course, you guys have, most of you have. And I think it's premature to approve a plan submitted by this petitioner without having reviewed by the staff. There are major safety problems inherent in this roadway that need to be taken into consideration. And I'm really reluctant to prove something, particularly since I am not a traffic engineer, and assuming that our approval will be safe for the public. What my, I would propose, if I was going to make a motion, would be to postpone the variance until such time as staff has either had an opportunity to review and comment on the proposal, or to, to resolve the variance per the DMC requirements. So that if they resolve the variance through the DMC, and the petitioner disagreed with it, then they could present that disagreement to us in a form of a variance, like they have tonight. And then we can hear both sides of the discussion, and then make an intelligent decision regarding whether or not to approve this variance.
Are you making that motion as an amendment?
I, I'm not sure it's appropriate to make, because it's such a different motion.
I think that's...
It wouldn't be an amendment to...
Well, that's the only way we can handle it. We need to either not make a motion at all, and vote on what we've already got on the floor, or you can make your motion, and we can, if it gets a second, then we can take a vote on that, and then we can move on.
Sure. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to postpone a variance until such time as the municipality of Anchorage traffic engineering staff has had a chance to review and comment on the petitioner's proposal for the seven lighting standard, or such time as the DMC variance has been resolved.
Do we have a second for the motion? For lack of a second, it has failed. So we'll reconsider the original motion, which was to approve from Mr. Dean's, and I think Mr. Pruse seconded that. Oh, Mr. Ferguson, Dan, I'm sorry. You seconded that motion. Do you want to speak to your motion?
I believe Pruse seconded it, but I want to comment on it.
Okay, go ahead.
I will be supporting the motion, but I think it's critical when we do findings, that we stress the fact that when we end up with competing codes, the code that has been adopted has to carry more weight than the document that has not been adopted. And so what I'm driven by, I hear Commissioner Spring's comments seriously, but what I'm looking at is the DCM is not an adopted code. The Hillside District Plan is an adopted code. We also have documentation from multiple residential groups up there supporting the lower lighting level. And for those reasons, I will, I will support the amendment, or support the motion that provides for the seven lights. But it's critical for the findings that we look first to which code has been adopted before we, because we're going to have this hierarchy of issues as we go forward. When we worked on Title 21, one of the biggest issues were how we were going to resolve that. The committee never adequately addressed that issue. The committee could not resolve that issue. And so I think it's important that we're setting a precedent tonight, and the precedent is the adopted code, the Hillside District Plan carries more weight than the Design Criteria Manual when they both speak to the same subject. But I will be supporting the motion on the floor.
Commissioner Dean?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a short statement, that I feel that my second to my motion was by Dana Pruse, who is a transportation engineer and has built roads all over the state and the city of Anchorage. And I feel that if he is comfortable with my motion, that I feel it's a fair second on that motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to clarify something that Mr. Ferguson stated. The Hillside District Plan is not a code. The Design Criteria Manual is not a code. The only code that is in place is Title 21. The purposes of the Hillside District Plan, Title 21, and the Design Criteria Manual are all different. They are not, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. It's an apple and an orange and a banana. So I just wanted to clarify that you're not, when you say that one code is adopted and one code is not adopted, you're not really comparing equal documents that have the same purpose. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to respond. I may have misspoke, because I understand they're not a code, but they're all being used to try to identify what is the correct lighting standard for this subject. And my point is, is that the Hillside District Plan has been adopted by the assembly, the Design Criteria Manual has not been adopted by the assembly.
Mr. Mulcahy, did you? Okay, thank you. Mr. Pruse?
Yeah. I seconded this motion for one main reason, is I was uncomfortable with the 32 lights, but I was uncomfortable with no lights. I do live on the hillside, not in Potter, Potter Creek, or in the area next to it. And, and I was concerned about some site safety issues. I was, the curve, and some intersections. And quite frankly, I was kind of torn which way to go, until I saw this option put down on the, on the table in front of us. So, so I think it's, it's, it's kind of the best of both worlds. I'm very sympathetic to the community, to Rabbit Creek, to HALO, to the Potter Creek Homeowners Association. I quite remember the agony on Rabbit Creek, where it intersects Goldenview Drive, and that upgrade, and what transpired after that. So I don't think anything's perfect. I don't know, I don't know if there's to be anything different if we postponed it, and they came back with either a difference of opinion, because it seems to be that's what, between lighting folks, that's, it's what people prefer. I understand that the municipality staff's concerned about error on the most conservative of judgment, as being most conservative. So with this option, I think it's something I can support, and that's why I seconded it.
Thank you, Commissioner Pruse. Any other comments? We'll use our buttons on this one, if you would, please.
Hit your on-the-floor button, please.
On the floor, yeah. Oh.
It's not showing. Okay, just a second.
Yeah, with Stacy, and then, yeah, Dana. You were the...
It's still not working.
I can't. We can't vote, we don't.
Okay, just a second.
And it looks like that motion has been approved. We will now move on to case number...
Findings.
I'm sorry? Oh, findings, that's right, findings, excuse me. Finding the facts. And what? I already read that. I read that in the beginning. Finding the facts, go ahead. Mr. Dean?
Through the chair, I have several findings. And the first one would relate to the original wording of the case document. It said, "Street lighting shall conform to the requirements of the Department of Public Works and the electric utilities serving the subdivision." As stated by the staff, the electric utility did not have any specific requirements. Also, the Department of Public Works is determining their decisions based on the Design Criteria Manual, which is not an adopted document into code, into municipal code. So those two items do not really apply for reasoning for this particular lighting standard. There were four items that they covered, that the staff covered on their variance request. And the first one was basically saying that the lighting was required due to the Hillside District Plan, but it doesn't really say anything in the Hillside District Plan that's clear enough. But what we do know is that Potter Valley Community Council and the Potter Creek, I'm sorry, the Rabbit Creek Community Council and the Potter Creek Homeowners Association have voiced disagreements with requiring continuous lighting. Also, the next item was, "The granting of a specific variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare interest to other property in the area in which the said property is situated." This has definitely not been proven to have not been met. There is no proof that this is true. There is no proof that this is true. The city information is erroneous. It is, again, based on DCM. It is also, 8%, 10%, 10 and 1/2% grades are used all over the hillside on major roads. And it's interesting that they've just picked this one particular road to change. Number three was, "The road will have, such variance will not have the effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations or the comp plan of the municipality." This road should not be classified as urban. It is a mistake, and it should be revised. In any event, the Hillside District Plan does not have a lighting standard. And the fourth item that they said that you have to follow undue hardship would result from strict compliance with specific provisions or requirements of the subdivision regulations. It is very expensive to put in 41 lights, design and install them, and purchase those products. I believe that is an undue hardship that isn't necessary. So my findings also should include that the Design Criteria Manual has not been adopted into the municipal code. It does not have a public process. It should not be used to determine lighting standards. The DCM has continuously changed over the years at random by staff. The DCM has also been unevenly applied to various developments on the hillside. The development just above this one has no lights. Number three, there is no concrete process to apply for a variance from the DCM, nor is there a process for appealing that decision. Both the administration writes that manual and it handles the appeals. It's a circular argument. Number four, there is no national standards for rural lighting, nor for the state of Alaska, nor the MOA, or the Hillside District Plan. And last, the neighbors don't want all that lighting. And I agree. Would be like a runway in the middle of the hillside. Thank you.
Any other findings? I think that was thorough. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to the next case. Did I forget something already? I'm going to move on to the last case that we had, if there's anyone here, for case number, it's 2013080. The municipality of Anchorage, current planning development department, an ordinance amending Title 20 war for Camper Park in Gertwood. If there's anyone here for that, that is going to be postponed. So if you're here for that, you probably want to, unless you want to hear us talk for another 25 or 30 minutes, it's probably time to move on. Now we'll call case number 2013-070. The University of Alaska Site Plan Review for Private Facilities, 7.6 acres. A request for a site plan review in the B3 SL district. Can I have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. UAA is requesting site plan approval for a temporary use. The B3 SL district, per Assembly Ordinance 2003-142, states that a public hearing site plan review is required prior to the issuance of a grading and excavation permit on this, within this district. It's particular to the petition site. An aerial photo of the petition site is on page seven of your packet. The UAA's proposed site plan is on page 25 in your packet. The special limitations of the zoning district, the AO 2003-142, that can be found on page 30 of your packet. The proposed temporary uses would terminate on July 29, 2016. A little bit of background of the purpose of the request. During construction of UAA's new parking garage and School of Engineering and Industrial Industry Building and renovation of the existing engineering building, UAA would like to, would like the work crew parking and construction staging area and the UAA maintenance yard to be temporarily relocated to the petition site. The proposed site plan shows work crew parking and the construction staging area on the north half of the petition site and the maintenance, UAA's maintenance yard on the southern half. An eight-foot-tall chain-link fence would be placed around these uses for security. The fence would be set back about 100 feet, well, 100 feet from the north and west property boundaries, and the fence would be 95 feet back from the south property line and 30 feet from the east property line. The general standards of site plan approval is that it will not have a permanent negative impact on items listed below substantially greater than that anticipated from permitted development. This is a B3 district. The standard, staff finds that the standard is met. Pedestrian vehicular traffic circulation. The official streets and highways plan identifies Lake Otis Parkway as a major arterial, Providence Drive as a minor arterial. Both Laurel Street and 38th Avenue are local roads. The site plan proposes one driveway from the crew parking and material staging onto Laurel Street and another driveway from the maintenance yard to East 38th Avenue. Neither the crew parking and material staging area nor the maintenance yard are expected to generate substantial traffic greater than that anticipated from the retail or office uses that are permitted in the B3 district. The maintenance yard will rarely have trucks going to and from the yard. In regards to the crew parking and material staging area, it is anticipated that there will be three to six daily trips carrying construction material. None of the truck trips will be carrying gravel or fill. The truck travel route for vehicles from the staging area to the Engineering and Industry Building will be via Laurel Street to Providence Drive to Spirit Way. Approximately 60 to 70 personal vehicles will be parked in the crew parking area. The vehicles will arrive between 6:00 and 8:00 AM in the morning and leave around between 4:00 and 6:00 PM in the afternoon. After parking their vehicles at the petition site, the crew parking area, workers will walk to the construction site. While the site will be surfaced with gravel and not paved, the applicant will keep dust down with watering trucks and will clean up mud tracking from machinery using sweeper trucks. The petitioner's listed some of the uses, or some of the items that would be in the north section of the petition site and in the UAA temporary maintenance yard in the southern portion of the site. I've listed them a second time on page four of the staff analysis. In regards to standard number four, the maintenance of compatible and efficient development patterns and land use intensities, the proposed temporary uses appear to be compatible with the surrounding development and land use intensities. The site has approximately 100 feet of mature natural vegetation along Lake Otis Parkway and Providence Drive. The vegetation will buffer the proposed temporary uses from these streets. To the east is the McLaughlin Use Center and across Laurel Street, and this is a secure facility. Site plan shows a minimum of 30 feet distance between Laurel Street and the crew parking area. The OPA building is located south of the petition site across 38th Avenue. The site plan shows a minimum of 95 feet between 38th Avenue and the UAA storage yard. Although there's no visual buffer between the petition site and the McLaughlin Use Center or the OPA building, there appears to be sufficient distance to mitigate incompatibilities with this temporary use. The department recommends approval of the site plan for a temporary use per Anchorage Municipal Code, Title 21, Chapter 50, Section 200, and the special limitations on the zoning, AO 2003-142, subject to the following conditions. The conditions are listed on page five of your packet. The department recommends approval subject to conditions 1 through 8. Be happy to answer any questions, and the petitioner is here, prepared to make a presentation as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Commissioner Prus?
Yeah, real quickly, what happens after 2016?
Well, Mr. Prus, through the chair, Mr. Prus, I'd recommend that you direct that question to the petitioner. What was described to us during pre-application meetings is that UAA foresees other forthcoming construction projects where they would seek to use the site again as a temporary storage during construction of other buildings. They don't have any plans to build a building on this site at this time.
So, okay, so it becomes just a gravel yard that's used for storage?
Well...
Or are they, at 2016, on July 29, 2016, I guess maybe the question is, what is it turned into? Is it locked up and nothing's allowed inside until they apply again for another short-term usage?
Yes, that's correct. Mr. Prus, what is proposed is that the site plan on page 25 of your packet, all those items would be, you know, construction of these buildings and the UAA maintenance yard, those would all be located on this site surrounded by a fence. But at the end of the 2016 date, July 29, 2016, this approval for a temporary uses on site plan would expire, and all those uses would, you know, the construction yard would go away because the building's built, and the UAA storage yard would go back to its old location, which it's being displaced here because they're having to move parking around. But the type 2 gravel layer would be left on the property. So you'd have the natural vegetation and the buffers that are being retained, but all of the equipment would be moved. The type 2 fill would remain in that spot.
Forever?
That's right, until the property is developed.
Looking at the site, is there any wetlands or any vegetated area? I see maybe some shrubs or trees around the, on Lake Otis and Providence Drive. Do those remain, or they get cleared out, too?
Well, that was a subject of some discussion. It was decided it would be better that issues of the flood hazard overlay district be dealt with, with the building permit. Ron Wild from the Building Safety Division has been working on that issue. So what we have here is, you know, no wetlands that have been identified. However, there is a flood hazard overlay district map that identifies a portion of the site as being within the 100-year flood hazard zone. And so what Watershed Management Services offices said is that flood hazard permit will be determined, whether or not a flood hazard permit is needed, will be determined at the time of the building permit.
On your eight conditions for, on page five of your recommendation, I see you specifically say no fill or gravel stockpiling is permitted. What about snow?
So the applicant has not proposed using any portion of the site as a snow storage yard, and that would be prohibited as well. It's not listed here, but it's not one of the proposed uses in their application. If the commission wanted to, they could add...
Yeah, I was just wondering, since you spelled out, you know, gravel stockpiling or fill, well, actually, you have to fill two feet, so fill is really, you know, accepted, I guess. But you say gravel stockpiling, but you don't say snow, so I was just curious about that, the reasoning on that.
Yeah, staff didn't, we didn't feel that it was necessary, but if the commission would like to add that as one of the other prohibited uses, it'll be prohibited either way, but that's certainly fine to add that.
And drainage would be, the drainage plan would be under the permitting application?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes, through the chair. I guess I'm not familiar with the concept of a temporary use and as it pertains to Title 21. Maybe you could enlighten me as to where I could find that in Title 21. And then, follow-up, though, before you answer that question. It appears that they didn't submit what I would consider to be a full site plan for this project. Because typically, when you get a site plan, you get a parking layout, for instance, with the parking space, aisles, and the dimensions of the aisles, et cetera, the circulation included in the site plan. So I don't understand if there's an exception during the temporary use requirement. I mean, that initiates a different requirement. And then, third, with respect to paved parking, is there a requirement for a variance to paved parking? I think paved parking is required in the city. Is there an exception to a temporary use for paved parking, and therefore there's no variance requirement?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Spring. Those are good questions, astute observations. Our land use regulations don't address temporary uses. This is, you know, for lack of a better term, a portion of the site is going to be used as a lay-down yard. It's sort of construction, storage, UAA maintenance yard. These things that are proposed in this temporary use are not, you know, the site plan, staff finds that the site plan is detailed enough for what is being proposed. You know, they've identified where they're going to have the maneuvering area, where the crew parking will be, but it's a level of detail that's acceptable for the temporary use of this sort of lay-down yard and maintenance storage. As far as paved parking, with the temporary use, you know, paved parking is not required. This is not permanent. This is not going to be the permanent final development of the property.
I guess that answers my question. I guess, but it kind of begs another question as to, how long can he have a temporary use?
Well, until July 2016.
Well, then you said also that they might submit another temporary use after that for other construction projects.
Yes, if that occurs, it'll come before the commission for a decision.
So there is no limit on length of temporary uses?
Not in code.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ferguson?
I'm continuing on Mr. Spring's questions there, Chairman, Commissioner Spring. What assurances do we have that on July 29, 2016, something will happen? I mean, if I came in and wanted to build a parking lot, this would fall under the new Title 21. I'd have to provide landscaping. I'd have to provide a snow removal plan. And I'm concerned that 10 years from now, this could still exist. I mean, this temporary, I mean, it's usually you have temporary in support of construction. That's okay, because there's a defined period of construction, and there's an assumption that we will get done at some point. But this sort of sounds to me like this is sort of kind of become the catch-all forever and ever and ever. And I have concern on that.
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson, that was the concern of the planning department as well, and that's why there is an end date on this temporary use approval.
But, I mean, we have trouble getting permits closed out. What, how will this get followed up? I mean, how will... I mean, how will, do we have some comfort level that somebody will drive by and take a look and say, this should be done now, and they don't have a permit for what they're doing at this point? I mean, because we have a lot of issues that don't get followed up on.
Through the, through the chair, Mr. Ferguson, you're correct that there, you know, historically, Anchorage has seen sort of sites that have been stuck in, you know, in a terrible state, and they've sort of continued on. What I can tell you is that their request for this use, they're very confident that they'll no longer have use in, the improvements that they have planned, this science and this engineering and industry building, the new one, rehabbing the old one and building of a new parking garage, they're going to complete all of those within the temporary use approval timeline that they've proposed here. And that's what they're going to be required to adhere to. If you're looking for assurances that they're going to, you know, adhere to that timeline, then I'd ask you to direct that question to the applicant. You know, we've made it very clear that they'll no longer be able to use the, this site for the temporary uses approved tonight after that date, and they're comfortable with that.
Possibly we should tie it into a particular project or something like that. Because I'm just, I'm afraid if we're not careful, this will never get done. And your introduction sort of kind of led me to that way, because you kept talking they would come back to this and come back to this, and so I have some concern with that, and I look forward to asking the applicant about that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pruse?
Yeah, I did a quick calculation, and without having the exact proctor or anything like that, it appears that there's about $1.7 million worth of gravel going to be put on this site without counting the fabric or the fence, which is a substantial investment in the property on a temporary basis, which leads me to ask the same question, Commissioner Ferguson, it doesn't, it's, it's almost thinking between the lines that it's, that maybe its long-term use could be this, with, as a storage overflow parking area.
Through the chair, Mr. Pruse, you're correct that the, that the fill, type-two fill will be left in place at the conclusion of this temporary use approval.
Commissioner Spring? Through the chair, this question is directed to the traffic engineer. With the site plan not addressing the actual parking layout or design or circulation, are you comfortable with the potential safety of the parking plan here with 70 vehicles, perhaps, according to the applicant, could be utilizing this, and without knowing where they're going to park exactly, and any organization of the parking that I can see on the site plan, or, that's my question.
Through the chair, Mr. Spring. Am I comfortable with that many people, many, many construction sites similar? I mean, the UAA sports arena that's going on on the corner of Elmore, on Elmore and Providence, also a very large site, I mean, and they have cruise parking on there, that there's really not dedicated layouts for these sorts of use. Most of the time, I'd say most of the contractors and workers who are working in these lay-down yards, I mean, they're familiar of the area, they have areas, they do typically have stuff marked for parking, maybe it's not striped, obviously, because it's not paved, but, I mean, they do have separate areas as far as maneuvering. And because the primary access for both of these are off of lower-volume local roads without direct access onto Lake Otis or Providence, I didn't have too many concerns as far as that, and there really are no, I guess, there shouldn't be any conflict with pedestrians as far as the separation of people who shouldn't be on the site going onto the site, sort of thing, I guess, the public and private mix. So when I was discussing this with them, I didn't have an issue.
Any other questions?
I just have a very quick question, some clarity for me. In the department recommendations in item number two, there seems to be, at least I don't quite understand where you're going with this. "All construction improvements related to this approval shall be substantially in compliance with the questionnaire narrative," and this is the part I don't understand, "and with the following plans on file with the Planning Division." What does that mean?
It just means the application that's submitted that you have here in your packet.
Why didn't we say that? Why didn't we say-
Well, you know, that's a good question. Mr. Parks, plain language is definitely better. I think in the future, I'll see if I can word that in more simple language.
Yeah, because I was looking for the plans on file with the Planning Division, if there was something else other than what we got.
No, it's just-
Okay.
The application that we have in the file.
If we could reword that, I would appreciate-
Okay.
-that far. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, with the petition-
I'm sorry, I'd just like to follow up on your comment with the staff. On most site plan reviews, we get references to actual plans with the preparer of the plan, the dates, and the plan sheets, for instance, I believe, everyone I've seen, we've get that. And why isn't this reference a particular plan sheet that we, that is available then to the public, and we know what has actually been approved?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, with, with roads and with, with public road reviews and public facility reviews, we'll often do a paragraph that says who was the designer and what sheets are being approved. But with a conditional use permit or a site plan review, sometimes we will and sometimes we'll just say the site plan that is included in the, in the application.
For instance, if I follow up, Mr. Chair, the Costco plans that we received last time, last month, both were amended site plans, and they reference extensively specific site plans. And I don't see the difference. It seems like there should be some consistency there, and that would then avoid the confusion like the chair mentioned regarding, what plans are they?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, you know, thanks for the, thank you for the question. You raise an excellent point. I just, I would respond that the large commercial establishment site plan review had several pages, and they were engineered, detailed, you know, site plan, landscape plan. In this case, the only thing that we have to refer to or need for reference is, there's an aerial photo that gives you background of what the campus looks like, and you have this Appendix B, the temporary use site plan. And, you know, it's a drawing to scale, although there's not a scale here, it's not an engineered, stamped drawing. I didn't feel the need to have to call out one particular figure in the approval.
Any other questions, staff? If not, then we will open it up to the petitioner, if they'd like to come forward. You have 10 minutes. How much time would you like to reserve?
I'd like to reserve five minutes.
Okay, five minutes, thank you.
I'm Michelle Ritter, R-I-T-T-E-R, with Dow HKM, and with me this evening is Chris Turleties with UAA. I would like to clarify that the temporary use is actually tied to a project. It's tied to the construction of the engineering and industry building, the renovations and the parking garage, so that date actually corresponds with the end construction date. The temporary use area is actually tied to the project SWIP, so when they go to close out the SWIP, they actually have to close out the temporary use as well. Additionally, typically, a notice of zoning action is going to need to be recorded against the property as a result of approval of the site plan, so that would kind of be another assurance. But just to kind of throw it out there, if you wanted to tie the closure of that temporary use to the CO being issued for the engineering building, that would be fine. We do realize that if, you know, on the heels of this construction project, if there's another construction project on campus that requires it, then we would have to come, I'm sorry, requires that to be a temporary construction yard for that project, then we would have to come back before you, so that you would have some measures against this being this ongoing use. In 2016, all of the equipment will be removed, it will be reclaimed in the sense that it will be seeded. As noted, the fill will stay. The buffer, the 100-foot buffer between, along Providence and Lake Otis are remaining. The only vegetation that's going to be cleared is the second-generation growth that's kind of inside the parcel outside of those 100-feet buffers. As Francis mentioned, the site is in a floodplain, so on our application, we had stated that we were going to be putting down a fabric on top of the existing vegetation and then placing two feet of fill on top of that. We just met with Building Safety on Friday to discuss alternative methods with filling and also permitting this from a filling grade permit. And in order to resolve the floodplain issue, they have asked us to actually excavate the area to be used as a temporary site, two feet, to put the fabric down and then to backfill it with type-two material. It's also been indicated that because that will be non-structural fill, that there will likely be a note that's required to be recorded against the property, stating that there is unstructural fill in there. As far as future uses, I think Chris Turleties can speak to that and kind of what UAA has planned for that. Other than that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Turleties.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, Chris Turleties, T-U-R-L-E-T-E-S. I'm the Associate Vice Chancellor for Facilities at UAA. As Michelle described, the intent of this project is really to be the construction lay-down area for the new engineering building and the renewal of the existing building and the parking structure. It's a fairly, it's, we expect it to be a three-year project, and that's the reason for the three-year term on the, on the permit. Parking, as you, as you all know and can appreciate, is it a premium on campus? This construction will take up some additional parking during the course of the construction. We have proposed to move some of the conexes that facilities have in the facilities area that would allow some additional student parking close by to the activity. So that's a reason for, for the, the UAA use of this property in addition to the construction contractor. Once the construction's complete, there's, we can, we can replace our stuff back where in the, in the maintenance yard that it's in now. So again, the construction, the use of that space by facilities are both intended to be temporary, temporary use. This is a fairly expensive piece of property we acquired a couple of years ago, over $1 million an acre, and we intend to build a very prominent UAA facility there. At this, at this point, we haven't identified what that exactly is. It's not in our current master plan, but the notion of a facility going there is in the master plan that we're currently working on. Expect it to be a gateway facility for student and administrative use.
Okay, and you have four minutes and 55 seconds remaining.
Thank you.
Any questions for the petitioner? And Ms. Dean?
Through the chair, I have a question on Appendix B. On your diagram of the temporary use site plan, you mentioned that Building Safety required removing two-foot depth of material from the site. Was that the entire site? Was it the maneuvering area, the material storage area, the crew parking area, materials? Which specific areas did they require removing that two-foot depth?
It would be with, within the floodplain area, which is primarily, I think it's safe to say that it will be mostly within the boundaries of the entire lay-down area.
So the entire area, two feet deep? What is the cost of that change order to UAA?
So I guess the question is, what's the cost of the contractor having to haul things from downtown or other, other places?
And bring new material in?
Well, it's a balancing act, so either you develop a site close by for the contractor to lay down, or you pay for him to haul it from across town.
Right, I'm just saying, I just want to know how much Building Safety's change costs the state. I'm just curious, you know, two feet of material removed, two feet of material brought in, I'm sure there's some compacting that'll have to go along with. Just curious what that's going to cost the government by that one request?
We just had this meeting on Friday.
Okay.
So I'm not sure-
You're not totally sure, okay.
Yeah.
I, you know, can we, can we take a stab at a million bucks?
Yes.
Wow. And what's the total overall cost of the project?
All, so all three pieces of the project, the new building, the renewal, and the parking garage are $123 million.
Okay, thank you.
So, just a clarification, the fill was going to be required regardless. When it was determined that it was in the, in the flood, flood plan, the, we had to do the excavation. So our intent at first was fabric down, fill on top of fabric. Friday, it was, you're going to have to excavate and then fill. So the depth of the fill hasn't changed, the excavation is, is, is the difference. And it'll be millions, the ceiling, is, is the upper end of what I expected it would cost.
And just for clarification, the area actually doesn't flood anymore, it's been culverted. However, flood hazard cannot issue the permit and give us the blessing without a LOMAR being issued, and that takes about six months, which would also add exceptional additional costs to the project because of what it would do to its schedule.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pruse?
The fencing, is it temporary or permanent?
It'll be temporary.
So it won't have posts in the ground?
No.
There'll be posts- But it, we're taking it down. When, when, at the end of, so it's not permanent, that it remains after the use of the, of the site is complete.
Okay, so it won't look any different than the fencing that's permanent?
Correct.
Chain link fence is permanent?
Not on-
My vision of temporary is that there's no, they're interconnected, they're panels, and there's nothing driven in the ground. So, but this will have fence driven in the ground?
Correct.
Okay. Is there going to be kind of any visual obstruction, like slats or anything put in it?
It's not our intent at the moment.
Thank you.
Commissioner Spring? Yes, through the chair, two questions, just for my own curiosity. Where's the parking structure going to be? Is that at the 240 parking spaces in front, that fronts Providence Drive? Is that the location of the parking structure?
So the, the parking structure is off of Mallard and University Drive, north of the existing engineering building. So it's in a, in a piece of property yet to be developed, and that's where, that's where the site approval for that is. That is not funded at this, at this point.
So what is the, then, through the chair, what is then the use for the 240 parking spaces? I'm not- I'm not clear why that's being removed from the amount?
So that's where we're building the engineering building, in that site, and so it's in a parking lot now, so it's a brown site.
Okay, one more question then is, and regarding the previous discussion, future uses of this land for other construction projects, that was brought up as a possibility. You're the Vice Chancellor for Construction and Projects, so do you anticipate using this site in the future for other projects that you have on the boards?
So, maybe is the answer to that. I mean, we're asking for it for three years now, we're building it for a three-year period, we intend to abandon it. If there is, I'd really like to be building on that site in three years, but that's unlikely, it's a little further out than that. But we would, if, if the opportunity arises or a construction project comes up that we could re-permit it for, that's a possibility. I'd like not to rule it out as a possibility by saying, no, we'd never use it again. But we recognize this as temporary use, and that's our intent is to use it temporarily.
Thank you. Commissioner Mulcahy?
I thought for sure Dana was going to ask about snow storage and removal. You didn't ask that, Dana. You want me to ask that?
Sure. Snow storage and removal?
So, and that's, the intent would be that on this site, if they, if they have to plow snow to access their equipment, that that would stay. It's not intended to be snow storage for the campus non-adjacent properties. So, similar to other parking areas, there's, you know, you plow snow and it stays on site.
Commissioner Prus?
Yeah, what would your opinion be as, after you're done with the project and you do not have another builder or construction project in the queue of removing the fence and mulching and seeding the existing lay-down area?
That's the requirement.
Okay.
And that's already been identified as the reclamation plan in the application.
Okay, I missed that, so that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions of the petitioner? I'm sorry, Mr. Ferguson?
Back to the excavation, as a professional engineer, I struggle with understanding how digging out a two-foot of dirt and bringing two-foot of gravel helps the flood situation. But I won't ask you that question.
Thank you.
The drawing basically shows a heavy, bold outline around two contiguous areas. Is that the area you're going to excavate two feet?
Correct.
And so, any of this vegetation along Providence and along Lake Otis, the vegetation that is there today would remain or be removed?
It remains.
It would remain, so that would remain intact.
So you see there's roughly 100-foot buffer between the back of the sidewalk and, or the front of the sidewalk and the fence line, so that stays, and that represents the mature vegetation that's there. You look at the aerial photo, and you can see that this is a fill site, and there's secondary growth that's starting to occur in there, and that would be the area that would be removed.
I just wanted to make sure that the outlying areas would remain as intact as you could leave them. That was the point of my question. No further questions, thank you.
Yeah, so the existing material is not native material, it's something that was brought in? Is it, is it organics in it?
Peat. It's peats.
It's peat? Okay, thank you.
It is, it had previously been used prior to UAA's purchasing the property as a lay-down yard, so we're not 100% sure what's in there, but we do know that there's some peats and not great material.
So there's more money to be spent on it at some further time when you develop it?
When we develop it, definitely.
Any other questions? Okay, you have three minutes or two minutes, or four minutes and 55 seconds remaining. And we'll open up, any other questions? None? Okay, thank you. We'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to testify on this case? Come on up. No one here to testify. Okay, then we'll give your rebuttal time if you like.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I just had a couple of historical things on the property. Mr. Prus asked what's there now. There is a menagerie of fill, both organic and inorganic, unusable, unsuitable materials that were placed there about 20 to 25 years ago. For some period of time, there was a small baseball diamond on that location that was overgrown. There's actually still kind of a partial backstop sitting out there, if you look real close. When you look at the geotag holes, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about 18 to 20 feet of organics in some locations. And I think the real reason, whether it makes sense or not, that you take the two feet of material out is so that you don't raise the elevation of the land inside the area that's a flood area. And the problem is, is that I think everybody believes that that flood area is mismapped at this time, but because no one has gone back and FEMA has not approved a different flood hazard district, and they have their own elongated process to go through, then everybody says you can't increase the elevation of the land inside the flood area. So, there you go.
Thank you. You still have about three minutes and 45 seconds?
No, I think, we appreciate you hearing us tonight, we appreciate your, we asked that you approve staff's recommendation, we certainly agree with it. Thank you.
Thank you. We will close the testimony at this time and remind everyone that if you, that's in this audience tonight, that you have a Yeah, no, not yet. I don't, yeah, no, that we've got a, got seven days to remember, or 20 days after the decision is made to make an appeal. I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on. And we'll take a motion. Positive motion? Commissioner Spring, and seconded by Commissioner Mulcahy.
Yes, this is my first try at it, so bear with me, we'll see how I do here. With respect to case number 2013070, make a motion to approve the temporary site plan use, a site plan review for temporary use per AO 2003-42 with the department recommendation, with the exception of department recommendation to adding the wording following, with the following plans on file with the planning division, to add a statement regarding the reference needed to cite the temporary land use plan prepared by Dow HKM dated 3/27/2013.
And Commissioner Mulcahy has seconded that. Any other comments? Let's use our machine on this one, if we could, please. I just want to see if you know how to do it. And it looks like it's unanimous to approve them. And we need findings of fact, please.
I'll make some finding of facts. The petitioner has met the requirements for site plan review standards for this case. It is a temporary land use, the land use will go away at a specified date, and we expect that it will be redeveloped eventually for UAA facilities in the future.
Any other findings? Then we will call that over. Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are you done with that case?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. I was requested to inform you that Mr. Weaver will be out of town on Thursday when we have our regularly scheduled director's meeting, or director's lunch with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and wondered what the will of the body was, whether you wanted to just cancel this month, postpone to a different date.
Anybody have any feeling on that, one way or the other? Cancel? Okay. Cancel? Okay, Erica, we'll just cancel it. I don't think there's anything that's pending that difficult. That's fine.
Thank you.
That'll work. Thank you. Right, we already did that. Oh, no, that's right, that's right, that's right. I do need a motion to postpone.
Mr. Chair, could I make a comment? Real quick, under committee reports?
We're not there, we got to get that one case finished.
We have, oh, I'm sorry.
And that's it. We've got case number 2013080. We have a motion. And I have a second. And any objections to that from anyone? We do not. Okay. Now, Commissioner Spring.
Thank you, sorry, I was caught up in that last case, I guess. The, under committee reports, just curious, I didn't, when I, I wasn't here for the meeting, unfortunately, when the committee assignments were parceled out, and I didn't see anything in the minutes regarding the university, UMed district plan, and I just wonder, just want to be sure that there's, was there the intent to assign somebody to the UMed district plan from the Planning and Zoning Commission?
You know, we took that out, I think, but I don't remember why. It should be probably someone there. That plan, I thought, was in the making. Can we handle that on Monday night? I'd rather leave that.
I would, except that I believe I got a notice that there is a public meeting tomorrow at Wenler Junior High School. I don't know if that would be something that the member, the committee liaison would want to attend or not, but
Maybe that's something you ought to attend.
Well, it is close to my house, so I can do that.
No, that's fine. If you'd like to attend and report, that'd be great, but I think that's something we ought to bring up on Monday. Connie, that should be something Connie runs down.
Yeah, I believe so.
Any other comments? Questions, bits of trivia? Okay, I take a motion to adjourn? Okay. Move, there we go, by Oh, is that right? Nobody made a move? There we go. Commissioner Mulcahy, seconded by Stacy Dean. There we go. Yeah, I know, I know.